Good morning and welcome. We have come together today to begin our work on the proposed county budget for FY23. Please pause for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilwoman Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you would please stand with me. And if you would, I think today's invocation, I'd like just to engage in a moment of silence for the people of Ukraine and for the people of Russia who are trying to protest the war in Ukraine and are being arrested for expressing those views. And for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much to the many elected officials who have come today and to the many community leaders who are here and for all of you that have participated in this budget because you are part of the executive branch. And at this time, I would very much like to introduce our county Executive Stuart Pittman. Good morning.
Okay, that didn't count. Good morning. Good morning, Chairwoman Rodvian, Vice Chairperson Pruski, Councilwoman Fiedler, Councilwoman Hare, Councilman Volkey, Councilwoman Pickard, and Councilwoman Lacy. I want to recognize the people that are in the room because this budget really is the people and county departments' solution to problems that were brought to them by our residents, and they are creative solutions, they're important solutions, and that's what we're going to be asking the council to fund with this budget. So, this is long, but I'm going to name names, and please raise your hand. Adrian Mickler, Executive Director of Mental Health Agency; Amal Awad, our Chief of Police; Anne Baudosky, our Personnel Officer; Ben Burge, our President of our Economic Development Corporation; Kernitra White, Social Services; Chris Klein, Superintendent of Detention; Chris Phipps, Department of Public Works; Chris Trumbauer, our Budget Officer; Christine Anderson, Director of Central Services; Cliff Martin, Director of our Housing Commission; Don Lindsay, President of our Community College; Doug Holman, Administrative Hearing Officer; Greg Swain, County Attorney; Jessica Layes, Director of Recreation and Parks; Jim Fredericks, our Sheriff; Karen McQuade, our Comptroller; Carissa Kelly, Director of Aging and Disabilities; Aaron Karpowitz, Arundel Economic Development Services; Kirk Murray, President/CEO of Workforce Development; Mark Wiedemeyer, Inspections and Permits; Michael Botzaris, Director of Ethics Commission; Nelesh Kalayana-Raman, Health Officer; Pam Brown, Executive Director of Partnership for Children, Youth, and Families, say that five times fast; Priti Emrick, Director of Emergency Management; Rick Napolitano, Director of Information Technology; Sam Snead, Director of Transportation; Skip Ald, Director of our Libraries; Steve Kye-Ziegler, Director of Planning and Zoning; Tricia Wolford, our Fire Chief; and last, I did not put him in order, but our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. George Arlato, thank you for your eight years. You have become a wonderful partner, so thank you. People ask me what surprised me most in this job since I came in, and what I tell them often is that it is the extraordinary dedication of the people who run the departments, the institutions that we're funding today in county government, so thank you all. But I also want to recognize my leadership team in our office on the fourth floor with Matt Power, Chief Administrative Officer; Dr. Kay Badgister-Brown, Chief of Staff; Pam Jordan, Health and Human Services, Deputy CIO/CAO; Lori Rhodes, Land Use Deputy CAO; Chris Trumbauer, again, Budget Officer; Pete Barron, Director of Government Relations; Jeff Amoros, Director of Communications; Renisha Alfonso, Deputy Director of Communications; Jennifer Purcell, Director of Special Projects; James Kitchen, Community Engagement and Constituent Services; Vince Molden, Assistant Director of CECS; Pete Hill, Director of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion; Asha Smith, Equal Opportunity and Human Relations Officer; and Elizabeth Funch, our Arundel Stat Manager. So, thank you all for being here. And finally, I just want to note that we have our budget team here, all of them. They are the ones who created this small document that you all will be studying very thoroughly in the coming weeks and our residents will be commenting on. So, in addition to their Director, Chris Trumbauer, we have Huja Hasim, Steve Thoreau, Naomi McAllister, Darlene Flynn, Beth McCoy, Hannah Dyer, Samantha Shiroko, and Janey Molden. So, thank you all for your work. And then, of course, we could not do a budget like this without the support of our state and federal partners who work with us on our priorities. And we have with us, from Senator Cardin's office, Jessica Cook; from Congressman Brown's office, Adam Spangler; we have our State Senator Sarah Elfrith, who is the Chair of our delegation, as well as her partner in good work, Senator Pam Biddle; and we have Delegates Heather Bagnall, and I believe some staff of others as well. And then on our School Board, we have with us Mr. Robert Silkworth, and Dana Schalheim, and Joanna Tobin, and Michelle Corkedell. Thank you all for joining us and for your service to our students. And then from our courthouse, we have Jim Fredericks, we already got. Okay, so, thank you all for being here, and thank you also to the community leaders that are in attendance. There are too many to mention, leaders of some of the organizations that do important work, some of the nonprofits in this county as well. This is a good morning. I believe I said good morning already, but I believe it is a very good morning. It's a good morning for taxpayers, it's a good morning for education, it's a good morning for public safety and for public health, and I believe it's a good morning for all of Anarundel County because this is the morning that I and my battle-tested, talented, and extraordinarily dedicated team of public servants present to you our equally battle-tested, talented, and extraordinarily dedicated County Council a proposal for your consideration to do what our county charter requires, and that is to identify the needs of our residents, meet them as best we can, and to establish a revenue plan to cover the costs of those investments. So, the charter requires that we introduce to you a balanced budget by May 2nd, and that you then hold two public hearings, make whatever amendments that you as a body approve, and then no later than June 15th, vote to approve a balanced budget. Historically, County Council members went into this process with the charter in mind, knowing that compromise would be necessary for the district that they represent. This council has been different. Only four members of this body have ever voted to approve a budget. That may change. Hope it does. I understand that we had to make some tough choices in our first three budgets. Everyone knew in year one that investments in our schools, our public safety agencies, and our infrastructure had failed to keep up with our county's growth. Like any organization with an ambitious mission, we had to invest in ourselves, and we did. In year two, we tightened our belts. The pandemic drove revenue projections down, and we responded like any well-run business would, with conservative budgeting. And last year, we got back on track, and you saw the result in our bond ratings. Our county's 50-year failure to convince Moody's that we are among the best-managed governments in the country finally ended, and we got that AAA bond rating because we invested wisely in ourselves. So, the budget before you is a result of those three budgets. Thanks to your decisions and our efforts, we are able this year to remove our structural deficit, reduce our borrowing, increase our reserves, lower our taxes, and provide record investments in education, public safety, parks, health, and smart infrastructure. I often say that we are working together to make Anarundel County the best place for all, and today I am saying that after eight budget town halls, in fact, after 29 budget town halls since all of us were sworn in, we have worked together to make the best budget for all. So, I prerecorded a 30-minute budget presentation that you can watch online if you have not already, and you will have lots of opportunity to dig into the details. I will not give you that same 30-minute presentation. I will instead briefly share some highlights. First, let's talk taxes. Remember, the Tax Relief for Working Families Act, that was my number-one state legislative priority for two years. Well, it passed, and we're using it. Our county has the lowest income tax rate in the region at 2.81%. Our neighbors are at the state maximum of 3.2%. This budget lowers that rate to 2.7% on the first $50,000 of taxable income for every county taxpayers. So, if you are a bus driver or a janitor, that is most likely all of your income, and you will get a lower rate on all of your income, but all taxpayers get that benefit on the first $50,000. On the property tax side, this county has set its rate for homeowners at the charter-mandated tax cap for 24 of the 28 years since that has existed. This year, that rate would have been 96.2 cents per $100 of value. This budget sets the property tax rate 3 cents below that cap, farther below the cap than ever in our history, at 93.3 cents. Again, that is the lowest in our region. Usually, when politicians cut taxes, they pass on the burden to future taxpayers. With this budget, we do the opposite. We are protecting our future taxpayers, and here's how. This is the first budget in county history that reduces rather than increases county borrowing. That's possible because we're doing what fiscally responsible families do in a good year. We are using our surplus from last year's conservative budgeting to pay upfront far more than previous administrations ever did for capital expenditures. Our $205 million of Pago protects future taxpayers. And we don't know what the economy will look like in the future, and I appreciate this council voting unanimously to increase what we're allowed to hold in our rainy day fund from 5% to 6%. We are not only fully funding that 6% in this budget proposal, but we are budgeting for 7%, hoping that you will pass a bill that allows us to set those additional funds aside to protect future taxpayers. And finally, there's that looming structural or potential future deficit that has so often haunted our county. Its relevance is debatable since it has never resulted in an actual deficit, but if you don't like it, you should like this budget. It's gone. This kind of fiscal discipline might worry some of you at a time when people are calling on their local governments to deliver so much. Fear not. My chainsaw was not deployed, and very little, if any, duct tape was needed to make this budget possible. In fact, we're investing in exactly the priorities that our residents have asked for. Funding for our schools in this budget is $50 million higher than it was last year. $50 million over last year is a greater increase than ever in county history, and it's money well spent. It fully funds the Board of Education's compensation request, including the very last of the restored step increases, a 4% COLA, and a new step increase. It also meets or exceeds all of our state blueprint for education obligations, and with that, we are adding 119 new special education positions. Think about that. That will make an impact. As well as 29 new social-emotional learning positions, 48 new pre-K positions to convert half-day programs to full-day pre-K classrooms, 20 new English language development positions, and three new bilingual facilitators, and 140 new classroom teacher positions, including the final year of staffing required to fully open Crofton High School. So, this budget also, for the first time in county history, fully funds the Board of Education's capital request for new schools and facility upgrades. Man, that felt good. And I'll have to tell you that as revenue projections were adjusted during the budget process and we found that there was going to likely be more revenue, we always put most of it into the Board of Education. We didn't think we were going to hit $50 million early on in the process, but we got there. So, for public safety, we are delivering not only for our police officers, our firefighters, our detention officers, and our other personnel with fair compensation packages that have been approved by all bargaining units, but we're delivering for their agencies as well. Police will get the staff they need to implement the Police Accountability Act mandates from the state, and also the long-awaited supply of new vehicles that allows us to promise new recruits a squad car with their badge. Add in the new forensics facility, new special operations facility, and replacement of the dilapidated firing range, and there is no question that this is a good county to serve and protect. Fire continues to train and hire new firefighters, to train and certify new EMTs, to build new stations and plan a new academy. Our firefighters are also looking forward to receiving nine much-needed new vehicles, including a tower ladder truck and two new fireboats. Detention, sheriffs, and state's attorneys are all getting new support in this budget as well, but I want to single out a group that is often forgotten: our first first responders. Working at our Police and Fire 911 call centers, theirs are the jobs where a few seconds' delay can cost lives. I want to thank the County Council for unanimously voting to reclassify their positions, allowing us to increase pay and offer career advancement. And I want to note that the capital budget request before you funds the planning of a state-of-the-art joint 911 call center to be led by our Office of Emergency Management. Emergency management was an afterthought in this county for too long, but our team there has demonstrated its value in recent years, and this new center and the outstanding public servants who will work there will prepare us for whatever challenges the future brings. But we don't just protect people in this county, we also protect the natural environment that sustains us. Your support for the Green Infrastructure Master Plan tells me that you understand the role that our parks play in that work. We are besting last year's record investment in our parks with $99 million, thank you to support from our state partners, this year, and a $298 million over the next six years in the capital budget. Major investments include Bacon Ridge at Forney, Odenton Library Park, Deal Park, our new Brooklyn Park Center, and two new sports parks, Tanured Springs and South Shore. But the biggest addition to our park system will be the 544 acres in the geographic center of our county to be called the Crownsville Hospital Memorial Park. We expect the land to be granted to us by the state this summer, and want to thank Governor Hogan, Senate President Ferguson, and Speaker Jones, and our outstanding county delegation from both parties for helping us to secure $30.5 million to get the work there started. And I look forward to seeing many of you there tomorrow at noon for the Say My Name ceremony in honor of 1,700 patients who died and were buried at the site. We're also investing a record $7.8 million in improvements to public water access, $6 million in vehicle electrification, and are proud to announce that we have resuscitated the depleted Forest Conservation Fund that we inherited in 2018. Its $3.6 million balance now allows us to plant and protect more forested land. Economic opportunity and environmental stewardship are not only compatible but are inseparable in our county. Plan 2040 is our path forward to facilitate the kind of development that is community-supported, gets cars off our roads, and improves the quality of our residents' lives. But sometimes, regulations that have no public or environmental benefit get in the way of economic opportunity. I experienced that in my business career, and I see it in our redevelopment and our affordable housing efforts. But nevertheless, we are finding ways to move forward. The parking garage at the Odenton Mark Station will be under construction before the end of this year. Councilman Pruski would have it no other way, and it will happen. Affordable housing is going in down the street, and sidewalks will connect the community. Glenbernie revitalization is moving forward. Councilwoman Pickard would have it no other way, as are transit, trail development, sidewalk projects all over this county. Our economic recovery has far outpaced the state's, thanks to the resilient businesses and $33 million in targeted grants from our Economic Development Corporation. EDC's Inclusive Ventures Program that grows minority and women-owned businesses will expand this year with $1.3 million in increased funding, if you approve it. I literally cried during the budget process when we were able to find $350,000 to support staffing and program enhancements at Sarah's House, our family shelter in West County. Because the work they do is so effective at getting families with children back into permanent housing and stable employment. I almost cried again when I went there this week to tell them the news. You all should visit there, especially when the kids in the childcare center are sleeping and dreaming of a better future. Sarah's House and transitional housing for people who have experienced homelessness are one part of a long-overdue effort to face our county's looming crisis in housing affordability. The $10 million in this budget to seed our new Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Councilwoman Lacy, Councilwoman Rodvian, many of you would have it no other way, and told me so, will get us started, and every family for whom housing is made more affordable will be an asset to our local businesses. The final piece of what this budget delivers is, at the end of the day, what matters most to every one of us, regardless of political philosophy, and that is health, mental health and physical health. Whether it's education, land use, wages, or housing, ultimately, our investments and our policies impact the health of ourselves and our neighbors. COVID strengthened us and strengthened our health and human service agencies. We lost over 1,000 of our neighbors, and we saved the lives of at least that many. But even during the pandemic, our opioid intervention team at the Department of Health and all of our dedicated providers continued to push down our numbers, with a 17% drop in deaths between '20 and '21, and an additional 41% drop this year to date. Can I get an applause for those efforts? We're not done. We're going to push them down further, but that work must continue. So, to ensure that all of our public health efforts reach our most underserved neighbors, this budget funds the continuation of our Health Ambassadors Program with a $0.5 million investment. Oh, and that Crownsville Hospital Memorial Park that I mentioned earlier will be more than a park. It will be a center for healing. As we bring that land and its historic buildings back to life, we will be nurturing the nonprofit organizations that undertake that work in a new health and wellness incubator at a building we already own on the Crownsville Hospital, 41 Community Place. Funds to restore that building are in this budget, and work will begin this fiscal year, if you approve it. And when you drive around the county, you may notice some big blue signs from a guy wanting my job, reminding you that it is your money. He's right. It is your money, and that's why this process is so important. From the budget town halls, to the Planning Advisory Board, to this budget proposal, to your council deliberations, it's why we listen carefully at those town halls, it's why this budget does include the veterinarian at Animal Care and Control, and the kindergarten readiness outreach program at our libraries, and the record investments in education, public safety, and infrastructure. It's why we are presenting a budget that everyone can support, that removes our structural deficit, reduces borrowing, increases reserves, lowers taxes, and provides record investments in what we need to catch up with our growth. It's why we have applied an equity lens to the investments and the programs, seeking to expand the opportunity that our good fortune allows, so that our budget benefits everyone. And it's why I insisted that this budget protect us from future economic downturns. I, my staff, and the dedicated department heads that have joined us today are asking you to fund the institutions that serve all of us, that protect all of us, and that improve the quality of our lives. These are not institutions that should be defunded. These are institutions that should be defended. So, I'm asking every member of this County Council to approach the work before you with respect for these institutions and respect for the people in your districts that they serve. If we can come together, put politics aside, and do our jobs as required by the county charter, I believe that you will each be able to go back to your districts and report that you brought our county a little bit closer to our shared goal of becoming the best place for all, and that you did that by unanimously passing the best budget for all. And as I'm looking over there, I see I did not introduce Mayor Gavin Buckley, Will Ral, and Vicky Gibson from the Orphans Court. Thank you. All right. I don't know what you guys have planned from here on out. I know some of us are going to go out and probably have a glass of water and a cookie, maybe. But thank you.
Thank you very much, County Executive Pittman. I know that putting together this budget has been a long and very involved and thoughtful process, going out and listening to constituents, hearing from the department heads, and hearing what their needs are, and putting all the different pieces together to make it really work. But I will tell you that after watching the video yesterday during my lunch break, I was cheering by myself in a room at the television. So, I'm really thrilled with what we have, and I can't wait to dig into the details. So, thank you again very much, and thank you to our state partners who played a role in making many of the things that are in this budget possible. So, thank you to everyone involved, and I look forward to getting to work on this. So, at this time, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill, or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved. Allison Pickard?
Is there a second?
Second, Councilman Pruski.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the FY23 budget ordinances.
Bill Number 3722, An Ordinance Concerning Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance of Anarundel County. Bill Number 3822, An Ordinance Concerning Tax Leavis, Special Community Benefit Districts, Shore Erosion Control Districts, and Waterways Improvement Districts. Bill Number 3922, An Ordinance Concerning Tax Levis, Arundel Gateway Special Taxing District. Bill Number 4022, An Ordinance Concerning Tax Levis, Arundel Mills Special Taxing District. Bill Number 4122, An Ordinance Concerning Tax Levis, Dorchester Special Taxing District. Bill Number 4422, An Ordinance Concerning Tax Levis, Farmington Village Special Taxing District. Bill Number 4322, An Ordinance Concerning Tax Levis, National Business Park Special Taxing District. Bill Number 4422, An Ordinance Concerning Tax Levis, National Business Park North Special Taxing District. Bill Number 4522, An Ordinance Concerning Tax Levis, Two Rivers Special Taxing District. Bill Number 4622, An Ordinance Concerning Tax Levis, Village South at Wall Chapel Special Taxing District. Taxing District. Bill number 4722, An Ordinance Concerning Finance Taxation and Budget Income Tax. Bill number 4822, An Ordinance Concerning Property Tax and Semi-Annual Payment Service
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. We do have a number of items still on our agenda, but they will take several hours. And so we decided that this would be a good time to take a little break for a quick lunch. So could I have a motion from one of my colleagues to recess for, I have on my clock 26 minutes until 12:00 PM?
So moved, Volkey.
Is there a second?
Second, Allison Pickard.
And all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We will stand in recess until 12:00 noon. Welcome back, everyone. We are back from our recess, and at this time, we have a number of presentations to the council. We're actually going to go slightly out of order from our agenda, and we will hear from Mr. David James, who will present on behalf of the Spending Affordability Committee. Thank you so much for your time and being here today, Mr. James. You may start when you're ready.
My pleasure. Thank you very much. So, yeah, my name is David James. I'm the member from District 7 for the Spending Affordability Committee. I've been on the committee now seven years, amazingly enough, and the chair for the last five. Also here today, we have another of our members, Mary Clapstale, our secretary from District 5. So let me jump to the bottom line upfront. In January of this year, we submitted our report in accordance with the county charter and recommended an increase of 3.5% to the fiscal '23 general fund budget as compared to fiscal '22, which equates to an appropriation limit of $1,809,61 million increase versus the adjusted base budget for fiscal '22. Always need to be careful about what numbers we're talking about here, because those numbers don't consider things like fund balance and rainy day fund contributions. Before diving into the details, let me say that the recommended spending budget here is not based on concern over revenues or anything like that. And as a matter of fact, I just spent some time upstairs going through the revenue projections and so forth, which obviously are quite a bit better than what we were told when we were going through our deliberations in January. And the fund balance is considerably more than we were told when we were going through our deliberations in December and January. But that's not what was driving the recommendation that we made. What was really driving it is concern over long-term spending. And I'll get into the details on that, but fundamentally, when you look at the numbers of personal income growth or county economic growth versus spending growth over the last 10 years, spending growth has significantly outpaced economic growth in the county. And again, I'll go through the details on that. Let me start with personal income. So personal income, of course, is what we use as a proxy to measure economic growth within the county. And it also provides an objective measurement by which to assess spending affordability. So simply put, if spending grows faster than personal income, there could be an argument made that it's not affordable, that additional taxes or fees and the like would be required to support that spending. So that's been how we've done it for the last 20 years, okay? We received data from a number of different sources to look at that. So historically, it's always been the Regional Economic Studies Institute at Towson, where we get most of our data. This year, we actually had a bit of a departure from past practices in that we asked the budget committee to provide us with some additional data from Moody's, because we were seeing, you know, a little bit of uncertainty and a little bit of anomalies in the data that we had been getting. And it's been hard the last couple of years because of the pandemic, and I don't think any of the models really anticipated what we've been through for the last couple of years. So the numbers are kind of all over the map. So we asked the Budget Office to get us Moody's data as well, which they did. When you look at those two estimates from RESI and then from Moody's, they're pretty divergent, I guess would be the way I would put it. RESI was presenting a pretty pessimistic outlook, 1.8% growth, whereas Moody's was looking at 3.8%. And that's actually quite a bit better than they're projecting for the state as a whole. And I don't know, I presented a copy of this, so there's a chart in here if you want to look at it that breaks these down. But basically, for the state as a whole, you're looking at a number of around 3% or so is what the economists are projecting for fiscal '23. And again, Moody's projection was 3.8, and RESI is 1.8. Okay? So we had to reconcile those widely varying estimates. So when we were doing that, we actually had a diverse range of perspectives and opinions amongst the committee as well, which was good. And they all have merit, and there's all good reasons and rationale for the different positions that the committee members had. We had members at the low end of the spectrum recommending a spending increase of 2%, again for the general fund, adjusted base budget. And the rationale there is the ongoing effects of COVID-19 to the economy. This is predominantly at the lower end of, you know, the weight scale when it comes to jobs and so forth, that we're still seeing this. Number of jobs in the county remain below the levels they were at back before the pandemic. As a fact, matter of fact, at the state level, unemployment is lagging the whole region, the whole Mid-Atlantic region as a whole. And we're seeing virtually no growth in high-paying jobs in the county, and I'm going to come back to that in a second. And of course, also recently, we have the effects of inflation really impacting a lot of folks in the county. So again, the rationale for the 2% recommendation was that future tax or fee increases, if needed, would disproportionately affect county residents who are still recovering from COVID-19 and who are feeling the effects of the inflation that we're seeing right now. The other end of the spectrum, we had members recommending a 3.8% increase, which basically matches the Moody's estimate. And the rationale for that is county labor participation rate is still well below what it was before the pandemic. Off the top of my head, I'm thinking the numbers were around 70% labor force participation rate in the county in 2019, 2020, and we're now, it's still only at about 65%. So there's a lot of folks who haven't come back to work yet. So there is an argument to be made that personal income is going to be positively affected as more people go back to work. Ultimately, what the committee voted on was a mid-range recommendation, 3.5%, and that's what the number that you saw reflected in our report. The rationale for that, we saw a very large fund balance last year, and of course, it's nothing compared to what we're looking at in the budget that's being presented to you guys today for this coming fiscal year. The concern is that the fund balances that we're seeing and the better-than-expected revenue projections that we're seeing are transient in nature rather than recurring. Hopefully, that's not the case, but that's the concern of the committee, and that fueled our recommendation of 3.5% versus a higher number. We're further concerned that these near-term revenue surpluses may lead to, I'd say in quotes, "permanent" or recurring spending increases that would raise the specter of potential structural deficits in future years when we don't have those fund balances available to us. So those are two of the primary reasons we're recommending 3.5%. And then, as I said, the overarching concern is spending over the last 10 years. So when we do this process, we don't really look at what revenue projections are going to be and say we should spend to projected revenues. That's not the process that we go through. What we do is we go through, how is the county economy growing, okay? And again, we use personal income as the proxy to measure that. So when you look over the last 10 years, and these are numbers provided by the Budget Office, the compound annual growth rate of spending over the last 10 years is 4.25%, whereas personal income has only grown 3.65%. So spending has gone like this, whereas economic growth in the county has been flatter. Okay? And then that spending has increased even faster in the last five years, 4.5% compound annual growth. So this is a concern to us over the long term. The data that we look at seems to indicate the personal growth is incrementally slowing down every year in the county. As demographic changes occur, the rate of population growth is slowing down, the county is aging. Lack of growth in high-paying industries, I mentioned that a few minutes ago, and that is a concern. When you look at the job growth over the last couple of years, a lot of the jobs have come back. Again, as I said, not all of them, but the ones that are coming back are in hospitality industry, food and drinking establishments, things like that, not in higher-paying industries. There's virtually no growth there, okay? So all of those subjects might be economic development considerations for the county, but as far as our charter to look at spending affordability goes, we're worried that personal income growth is slowing down a little bit over time in the county. So essentially, what that leads us to is the 3.5% recommendation is to bring spending back in line with personal income growth over the long term, and that was the primary reason for the 3.5% that we recommended. So there's some data in here, again, to back it up. You can see, and again, if this was provided to the council, the last 10 years, we only have actual data for eight of those 10 years, and in six of those eight years, spending in the county grew faster than personal income. And it's highlighted in red if you have the chart that I'm looking at. So with that, any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Any questions from my colleagues? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for being here today, and thank you for your service over the last few, several years, it sounds like. I think we asked some of these questions in previous budgets, but when you talk about personal growth income, in other parts of the work that we do, we're hearing a lot about some of the large employers that reside in the north part of our county. And I'm hearing a different story about economic growth and income growth from the Spending Affordability Committee today than I am from boots-on-the-ground jobs coming into Fort Meade and things like that. Where are you getting your analysis about job growth?
So the data that we're, let's see, I want to break it down into different pieces. The personal income growth is reported by the Bureau of Economic Analysis, okay? So that's, you know, data that's available through, you can go to the Data Mart and pull it and pull any report you want. So that's what we use, and we validate it with the Budget Office to make sure we're looking at the right thing. As far as job data goes, that, the details on that, and specifically, when I said there's been zero growth in professional and technical services, okay, over the last year, that comes out of data that's from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, okay? So there is, it's an extensive topic of discussion, I'll say, about Fort Meade, okay? Because it's got an outsized impact on the county economy, as I've talked about before. I will tell you, that's what I do for a living. I work up there, okay? And certainly, if you want a job up there, you can find one, and it pays very well. I don't know that I would personally say that it's growing necessarily, but it is steady, and it is a great source of income for the county. But again, what we're looking at is the actual numbers that are presented to us by the economists, okay? So, yeah, anecdotally, again, it's a good thing, I agree with you, but when you look at the actual numbers that are reported, it's flat.
Go ahead.
So those numbers, however, from the Bureau of Labor Statistics are lagging what's actually happening now. Like when we look at the building that's growing, the buildings that are coming to Disa and the National Business Park and, you know, they're going to have people in them, I assume, or otherwise, we wouldn't be building them.
Sure. They don't necessarily, those people don't necessarily all live in the county, though.
For sure, for sure.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, I think we presented data for last year or the year before that Anne Arundel is a very large net importer of jobs because of that.
Thank you. I believe Ms. Fiedler was next.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for being here today. So you said that you believe, or the committee believes, that the fund balance is transient in nature.
Yeah.
Is that related to COVID? Could you go into the reasoning?
Yeah, so just a few things. And like I said, I had to go upstairs and spend a little bit of time with Hush to go over some of these numbers, because they're so, they're so much better on the revenue side than what we were looking at four months ago. So there's a number of things that have been discussed. For example, I understand that recordation taxes and transfer fees are substantially more than was originally projected a year ago, like to the tune of $65 million or so, which is almost half of the projected fund balance for FY22. So if the real estate market were to slow down, or, you know, people were to, you know, we're all done buying houses now, or whatever it is, that would certainly be impacted. We know that in recent years, there have been impacts, or effects, I'll say, due to federal tax law changes have accelerated income tax revenue for the county, okay? I mean, I know in my personal case, we are paying our Maryland taxes earlier now than we always used to because of how it flows into our federal returns. So that would artificially increase the income tax numbers. And, you know, they're just, it's just a general concern of the county that those sorts of factors would mean that the outperformance of the revenue budget that we've seen in the last year or two is not going to be a persistent thing.
I'm not sure who is next. Mr. Volkey, I think.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tacking onto the question that Councilwoman Pickard was asking, it's almost, it seems to me like some of the information is sort of backward-looking as opposed to projecting forward. Because we have seen information presented to us, particularly relating to a bill with BRAC that's in front of the council now, that we are going to see somewhere in the neighborhood of probably 9,000 to 12,000 jobs in the next few years over at Fort Meade. I understand your point, not all those folks live in the county, and that's something we're talking about, too.
Right.
But with that, is there any consideration of how that impacts? Or are you all sort of looking backward and trying to go just a little step forward? Or does anybody look further out, maybe a year, two years, five years, to see how that projection looks?
Well, we look at, we do look at projected, okay, so the 3.8% personal income growth that Moody's is looking at is a projection.
Okay.
Okay, so we only have actual data through 2020, I believe it is, 2021 maybe, 2021 now. So we do look at projected personal income data going forward, and, as a matter of fact, I think I, so, yeah, if you look, if you look at what the econometric firms are saying, it's, they're projecting more than 4%, okay, for fiscal '24. Okay, so I'll go forward a year, and they probably gave us data further out than that that I don't have in front of me. I personally just take all of that data with a little bit of a grain of salt, because what I've seen over seven years on the committee is they will project a number like that, and then when the actual data comes in three years later, half a point down. And that's, I mean, it's not just every once in a while that happens, it's every year. These numbers never get revised upward, they always get revised downward.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Thank you so much for being here. I wanted to ask about the economy overall right now. Of course, the last day, we've seen a number of reports that in the first quarter, the economy has contracted, I think they said 1.4%, and that is at the same time that we're seeing this kind of historic increase in prices. I think first quarter now is 8% increase in prices over 7.1% last quarter. Knowing that this analysis originally was performed in January, how, if at all, looking at those new numbers now on the economy overall, how does that impact what you're seeing today? And does that, you know, change anything, or does it give you cause to emphasize anything?
I think it would have just reinforced it, because we had, so to me, that would offset what the county is seeing in terms of revenue, outperforming on the revenue side of things. So, but I don't think, I think it would reinforce what we said, especially the, whatever it was, minus 1.4% GDP last quarter. Yeah, I think we're still in a, there's a lot of uncertainty, you know, and again, back to these personal income growth back to these personal income growth projection models and so forth, and they haven't been right for a couple of years now, and I think we would all, the committee would say we should take all of that data with a grain of salt.
Thank you.
Actually, one of my colleagues already asked the question, one of my questions that was, and you've all sort of touched on the, you know, the issue of Fort Meade, we have a bill before us, as mentioned, where we've been getting data that, you know, we could expect as many as 10,000 additional employees at Fort Meade by the end of the calendar year. And so, you know, we're looking at planning, you know, at the, at housing needs in the Fort Meade area. But on a related topic, you know, you mentioned a little bit about, you know, the increase in home values in our county, and that's not part of, you know, you base your metric on personal income growth, not on home values, which, you know, obviously is a big part of our budget, and I apologize, you know, this is not my area of specialty, but why is that not included? That's, that's been a pretty big driver.
Well, capital gains from house sales would be part of personal income, that is factored into that, so.
But not, but, I guess I'm asking about, you know, our real estate taxes, our property taxes.
So, yeah, I don't pretend to fully understand how the formulas and all the, you know, like the 3% reduction that we just heard about this morning and so forth, a 3 cents reduction. I don't exactly know how that works, but my, what the Budget Office always tells us is that property tax revenues are pretty consistent and grow pretty consistently because of the way they're capped, so that's not going to cause big spikes in the revenue coming in.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional questions from my colleagues? It looks like there aren't, but maybe we'll have some follow-up, and so we might reach out to you.
Absolutely.
And just very much thank you for your time today, and thank you for all the hard work that you and your fellow committee members have done. Obviously, this is an enormous amount of work with, you know, especially the last couple of years, constantly changing inputs into your calculations, so really appreciate the work that you've done. And my understanding that this is your, you're leaving the committee?
It is, yes, that's been enough years, yeah.
So, well, let's, we will thank you for your many years of service as well. All right. At this time, we will now hear from the Planning Advisory Board, and Melanie Hartwig-Davis, you may come on down. She's the Vice Chair of the Planning Advisory Board, and will give us a presentation on their perceptions of the budget and recommendations.
I think this may be the first time I'm here without a two-minute limit. How cool is that? Madam Chair, council members, thank you very much. For the record, my name is Melanie Hartwig-Davis, and my address is 501 Bayview Point Drive, Edgewater. It is my privilege to represent the Planning Advisory Board, the PAB, as Vice Chair this morning, or now afternoon, for the budget presentation. The current PAB members are Gus Kurtz Jr. as Chair, myself as Vice Chair, Edward Evans, Van Mason, Elizabeth Rosberg, and Dawn Stolfus. As stated in the Anna Ronnell County Charter, Sections 532 and 533, the Planning Advisory Board shall make advisory recommendations to the Planning and Zoning Officer, the County Executive, and to you, the County Council, relating to the master plans, the zoning maps, rules, and regulations relating to zoning. In addition, the PAB shall consider and transmit its recommendations concerning amendments to the capital budget for each fiscal year. The PAB understands the budgetary circumstances currently experienced by the county and the state of Maryland, and the impact on these, of these, on the current and program years of the CIP. Therefore, as represented to you in our letter dated April 26, 2022, our final deliberation recommendations are based on our understanding of the need to be fiscally conservative while funding the most important regulatory, life, safety, system, and resource preservation needs. After the Spending Affordability Committee made its recommendation, the Budget Office presented the PAB with the affordability target for our deliberation. The PAB's final recommendations for the capital budget and the program are based on the assumed availability of 205 million of county pay-go funds and general obligation bond affordability of approximately 960 million, presently set at 160 million. This also includes an estimated surplus carryover of approximately 18.9 million from the prior fiscal year. The priority, the second recommendation that the capital budget and the program are based on is the priority of projects proposed by the requesting agencies, as well as consistency with the prior adopted CIP for fiscal year 2022 to 2027, and the fiscal and policy impact of these projects on the county. The initial program forwarded to the PAB for its deliberation was $1,635,904,000, and was over assumed affordability by $467,2100 in the six-year cycle. Following further discussion about the program, the level of assumed affordability, the extent of demonstrated unmet need in the county, the PAB voted to unanimously approve the final advisory recommendation for the fiscal year 2023 to 2028 capital budget by a vote of 5 to 0. The final advisory recommended program by the PAB is $1,212,3599, and is under affordability by approximately 1.6 million. The capital budget for fiscal year 2023, recommended by the PAB, valued at $183,563,699, is under the assumed affordability by $200,338,901. The PAB wishes to draw your attention to the following specific projects within the six-year program. These projects listed below are arrayed in no special order of significance. The first is F003-620, the New Police Firing Range. The PAB supports the design and construction of a new indoor firing range for the Anna Ronnell County Police Department. F580200, Fire Training Academy Replacement. The PAB supports the design of the Fire Training Academy for the county's career and volunteer firefighters. P000723, Tanyard Springs. The PAB supports the design and construction of the new Tanyard Springs Park in a high need area as identified by the 2017 Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan. P000823, Bacon Ridge Natural Area, Fornie. The PAB supports the design and construction for the expansion of the Bacon Ridge Natural Area. P000923, South Shore Park. The PAB supports the design and construction of the South Shore Park. L576100, New Glen Burnie Library. The PAB supports the design and construction of the new Glen Burnie Regional Library that will be coordinated, will be a coordination with the Cultural Resources Section of the Office of Planning and Zoning to provide a centralized location for the Joan Cass Beck Collection and display cultural artifacts, as well as house the county's archaeology, laboratory. F001318, Joint 911 Public Safety Center. The PAB supports the design and construction of the new 911 center to more efficiently direct calls to the police and fire departments. C000522, Circuit Courthouse Renovations. The PAB supports the design and construction of renovations at the Circuit Courthouse. Enclosed is the fiscal year 2023 to 2028 approved program, the departmental requests, and the PAB's final deliberation by project class summary for your information. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me, or contact Michael Stringer in the Office of Planning and Zoning, he would know best. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation and all the hard work that you and your committee, fellow committee members have put into preparing this, your presentation and your recommendations. Do my council members, do my council colleagues have any questions? Well, my goodness, we are really going to have a quick day. Apparently, you just laid it all out, and everybody's good with that, so.
There you go.
I'm, I'm good with it, so, with that said, thank you very much.
All right.
And have a wonderful weekend, and thank you for being a little flexible to switch there.
Absolutely, appreciate you.
All right. At this time, it is Mr. Trumbauer's turn and his team.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you'll give us one second, we're gonna, we're gonna install this dongle so that I can, so that I can give a presentation.
And thank you to all the Budget Office, the three of you that have, that have joined Mr. Trumbauer here today.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll assure you that Madam Administrator and I came down early this morning to test this out, to make sure it would work, so, I feel.
It just takes three hours to set up.
I feel 85% confident about it, how about that? And I believe you all have copies of the presentation that you should have on your own personal devices, or you can hopefully be able to look at the screen. It's telling me it's preparing.
Is there any budget jokes to tell?
Budget jokes?
Why did the structural deficit cross the road? Just kidding, there is no structural deficit. Sorry, I'm struggling here. Like, honestly, this worked so well before, it just keeps us preparing.
Whatever you did earlier, however you did it, especially for one of your family. Didn't you, didn't you, like, open something up and it worked?
Yeah, I did the same thing. I did not practice that joke, Councilman Volkey, I made it up at this exact moment.
I told you we had no budget jokes. There were none.
For one second, it feels like two hours.
Yeah, I don't know, Laura, it's not working. It just is circling and saying preparing.
That is a good sign.
No, it's asking me, is it possible I'm too far away?
No.
It's asking me to select a meeting room now.
Okay, that's a good sign, just wait.
I'm literally out of budget jokes, so I have no more stall tactics. All right, like, the only people here are people that probably don't even care about this, so we could, if you guys have it, like, I could give my hard copy to anybody that wants to see it, and we could go.
Madam Chair.
Oh, Rundle TV, yes.
Should we, like, take a recess, and by the time we all sit down at our desks and we come back, it'll be working?
I would be okay with that, we are making great time towards our.
Yeah, one more.
It's only a semi-serious suggestion.
Goals, for our timeframe goals today.
Something up in six hours.
Upon my colleague's request, let's take a 10-minute recess.
There you go.
May I have a motion for a 10-minute recess?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We will be back at 12:49.
And we look forward to the presentation from the Budget Office led by Mr. Trumbauer today.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council. I am Chris Trumbauer. I'm your Budget Officer. I'm joined at the table, and I do want to take a moment to introduce my entire staff because, really, the amount of work they put into this budget is extraordinary. But I'm joined at the table by Hooja Asim at my left. Hooja's our Budget Administrator. You probably know, he does the revenues and debt service calculations and things like that. Then, to his left is Stephen Terro. Stephen is the lead for the operating budget. So, Stephen is on a big sleep deficit, and this weekend, hopefully, he will start getting a little bit caught up. But a lot of work goes into doing this, and a lot of work was done by Stephen. And then, to my right is Naomi McAllister, and Naomi is the capital budget lead. So, all 1,110 pages in your capital budget, you can thank Naomi for those. And then, also, in the gallery behind me, we have our other staff. Darlene Flynn is not with us today. She wasn't able to come into the office. But we have Beth McCoy, Hannah Dyer, Sam Chirico, and Janay Molden, who round out our staff. And I just wanted to call them out each by name because, again, the amount of work is extraordinary. This is a big day for us because we passed the baton over to Michelle and her team in the Auditor's Office. But I will assure you that throughout this process, the Budget Team stands ready to assist any council member with whatever they need. So, with that, I'm going to dive in. I will warn you that I only know one speed, and it's full gas, so buckle up. We got 71 slides, and I'm just going to power through. Here it is. This is what it looks like. And, again, if you want to stop me, interrupt me, and ask a question based on something you see, please do. Otherwise, we'll take questions at the end. Here's where we are in the process. You can see that we start back in September on the capital budget, but now, we are at the end of April, maybe the beginning of May in a normal year, under legislative review and approval. So, that's the exciting part, where you all get to deliberate on the budget for the next 45 days or so. Now, I'm going to go through the FY '22 estimated results. So, remember, when we introduced the FY '23 budget, we go back and look at the year before and revise our estimates. So, here's some good news, and you heard the Spending Affordability Commission talk a little bit about our improved revenue picture. So, what you see on your page is the FY '22 budget as approved last June, and then you see our revised estimates. And, for the most part, revenue numbers are all revised upwards. And I want to call your attention to two in particular. The income tax. So, the income tax was budgeted at 647.4 million, but we're now revising our estimates to 696.5. That's a big difference. That's 49.1 million. And what happened was, and this was actually after, this is partially due to what happened after the spending affordability of the report, we got a much larger-than-expected income distribution, income tax distribution from the state. This was particularly high for Anarond County, but it was seen through jurisdictions all throughout the state. The state gave us a much bigger contribution. We adjusted our estimates, and so, that's why you see such a big one here. That is a recurring change. So, as Mr. James mentioned, there has been a behavior change on income tax, where people are paying a little bit earlier. That's kind of gummed up the models a little bit. So, Hooja spends a lot of time trying to predict what our revenue estimates are going to be. And because the behavior has changed, it's kind of messed up our model a little bit. So, what we're seeing now is revising our estimates up, and we're going to no longer be able to use the traditional way that people paid their income tax and got returns to do that. So, we do expect that there will continue to be some upward movement in the income tax. However, I think what we'll present to you a little bit later is a pretty modest increase and a conservative look at that. The other thing I wanted to share was recordation and transfer. This is extraordinary. So, the budget that was past 105 million revenue, but we're now revising an estimate of 170 million. We think that's a pretty good estimate. I'll be honest with you, there's a chance it might be even a little bit higher than that. You know, there's a couple more months left in FY '22. The interest rates are raising. The market's cooling off a little bit. But we've just saw an extraordinarily hot housing market, and so, the county gets a piece of that for all recordation and transfer transactions. So, if you look down at the bottom, you can see there are operating revenue actually revised up by a total of 137.3 million, which is a very good year, and, as you'll see in a little bit, helps account for our very healthy fund balance. All right, so I'm going to go through two slides with you here. This walks us through the budgeted project, projected results. I'm using something in the biz we call color coding. So, you see red is 110.8. That was our planned use of fund balance in the FY '22 budget, right? I want you to keep that in mind. Picture it red in your head. So, you can see the revenue, the approved budget, and then what we actually realized, that's the 137.3 number I referenced at the previous slide. Okay, then, you look at expenditures. So, we approved a budget at 1873. We're actually $5 million over expenditure. But I want to explain that because, remember, you all passed the bill to do a mid-year contribution to the Rainy Day Fund of 10 million, right? So, that gets included. So, we were actually $5 million under expenditures, but then we added 10 to the budget. So, when you net it out, it comes out as $5 million over, right? So, then you add that second column, and then we are actually 132.3 underutilized, okay? So, that number is in green, right? So, we planned to use 110.8. We're actually underutilized by 132.3. And then, at the very bottom of the screen, if you look, you take that 110, then you subtract, which is a negative number, the 132, and then you get 21.5, okay? And that's color-coded blue. There's a method to my madness. You're going to see in a second. Okay. Aha! The colors return. So, now, how did we get that giant fund balance of 262.4 million? There's two ways to show that. First, we ended fiscal year '21. When we closed the books, we had $240.9 million. Remember, we designated 110.8 for use in FY '22 budget, so that brings us to 130 million. But then, we got 132.3 million back because we were underutilized. So, that gives us 262.4. That's our current amount of fund balance available to deploy in FY '22 budget. There's another way to do that calculation, which is just showing our year-end balance of fiscal year '21, and then adding that difference that we had in the last slide of 21.5. It gets you the same number, because it is the same number. So, that is the total amount that is available. But there's been a lot of discussion about our fund balance. I wanted to make sure the council understood where it came from. Okay, I want to talk just for a quick second about our federal assistance funds. Remember, the CARES Act, we got $101 million. Please to report, it's all spent, accounted for, turned in our final report, accepted by the feds. All of that spending is documented on our Open Rundle site and the reports that you all got monthly. We have maintained those monthly reports for the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA or ARP. We are scheduled to receive a total of 112.5 million. We've gotten half of that so far. We're expecting the other half in a few weeks. We have a few more years to spend that, so we're being cautious with it. We've approved pretty much the first tranche to be spent to date. That leaves us about 56 million yet to spend. We're deploying about 23.5 million of that in FY '23 budget for one-time expenses. So, remember, last year, the ARP phenomenon was kind of new. We just got the money. We had kind of put these $1 placeholder in a lot of departmental budgets. Then, we worked with the council, and there was legislation passed where you guys would get a resolution to approve large expenditures. So, this time, everything we know about, we're showing you in the budget. It's programmed in to departmental budgets. We still have a sizable amount of ARP funding left in reserve, should something come up. And we also have a strategy to hold some of it until FY '24, because it has a shelf life that lasts to the end of calendar year '24. Where's all that ARP funding going? Here on Slide 9 is a list of all of the ARP funding proposals included in the FY '23 budget. I won't go through these now, but you have those, and they will be reported, and you can find out more details. But it's spread between the capital and the operating budgets. Okay, FY '23. This is the main event. This is what we're here to talk about. Budget Officer Trumbauer, how much is the budget? Well, it's $2.1 billion. That sounds like a lot of money, because it is. It's a little bit inflated because we include the fund balance. So, 262 million of that is fund balance. So, that's why we hopped over the $2 billion mark this year. Here's a look at year-over-to-year growth. So, the '23 budget, 2.157 billion. FY '22 approved budget was 1873. So, that gives you a $284.4 million increase. That's about 15.2%. However, to really get a more accurate apples-to-apples comparison, what we do is we subtract out the incremental fund balance. We also subtract out the one-time revenue. That's $3 million we got for police aid from the state. And so, that gives us 129.8 million of recurring incremental growth. That's about 7.4%. Just the way things work out, I will remind the council that January CPI, which is what we use as a good comparison when building the budget, was 7.5%. So, it was serendipitously very close to that. All right, what's in the budget? A bunch of stuff. First, I'll run through a couple of these, but there's also a four-page highlight document that's on the county budget page. But the increase in recurring revenue, I talked through. Property tax rates, as the exec mentioned in his speech, we're leaving those unchanged, even though the tax cap would allow a rate of 963. So, the income tax rate is being reduced for all income less than $50,000. We're using the progressive income tax ability that state legislation gave us starting this year. And for all income above that, we're keeping the 2.81% range. So, I just want to make it clear, nobody's income tax rate is increasing. Everybody, every income taxpayer will get a break in their income tax. No more structural deficit, as my joke illustrated earlier while we were killing time. We do, in fact, have $100,000 budget surplus, which is very modest, but it is something to be proud of, that we are back in the black. The other thing that the exec mentioned in his speech, we are reducing the total amount of debt authority. So, previously, in the FY '22 budget, that was $170 million a year. We're reducing that to $160 million a year. So, that's $60 million of savings over the course of the CIP. We're funding the Board of Ed very healthily, I would say, with 50 new million of incremental county funding. We're also maxing out the Rainy Day Fund to a new ceiling of 7%, and that will give us a projected balance of 132.7 million. We're starting a new Affordable Housing Trust Fund with $10 million of seed money. That comes from fund balance. And then, we're making a one-time contribution above what is required to the pension fund. That's 16.5 million. And then, there's 59 new positions in the general fund. Stormwater fee, solid waste fee, remaining the same as last year. However, you will see that there is about a 5% increase in both water and sewer rates, and that is because of the cost of doing business and supply chain issues. So, it's a modest increase, but something we needed to do this year. All right, let's talk about the revenue. Here's the pie chart. Where do we get our money? Mostly property tax and income tax. The other big recurring source is recordation and transfer tax. But that big olive-green slice of the pie is very unusual this year. That's 12% fund balance. Usually, fund balance isn't such a large slice of the pie, but this is an extraordinary year. Okay, revenue. Here's the numbers that were behind the pie chart. You can see that the two big guns are property tax and income tax. And then, you can see how that they changed from the budget amount in '22 versus what was changed in the revised '22 budget. So, for the most part, everything is increasing. I will spend a second to explain recordation and transfer tax at a later slide, because we are forecasting that that will start to go down, because this hot real estate market just can't keep up. So, all the way down at the bottom, you see our number that we're now familiar with, $2.157 billion budget. Okay, property tax. Remember, we get a pretty good deal in Anarond County, so we have the seventh lowest. We're keeping property tax unchanged this year. It's at $0.933 per $100 of assessed value. You can see all of our other Central Maryland neighbors are to the left of us on this chart, which means that their homeowners pay a higher tax rate than our homeowners. Little bit of detail on the property tax revenue. In '22, we got more than expected because new construction was good and better-than-anticipated personal property tax receipts. In FY '23, looking forward, we're projecting continued modest growth, about 2%. January CPI is so high that it goes above the tax cap calculation of 4.5%. You can see the tax differentials there for City of Annapolis and our friends in Highland Beach. So, all told, we're looking at $812.6 million of projected property tax revenue. That is about 3% higher than passed in '22 budget, but when we revise our estimates, it's 1.3. All right, so here's a look at property tax revenue over time. So, remember, our tax cap is based on revenue, not the rate. So, you can expect that the red line is the revenues. That just kind of has a nice, steady increase that continues this year. The reason that you're seeing the blue line, which is in today's dollars, kind of dip down is because the rate of inflation was very high this year, 7.5, but we are not increasing the rate. So, you see the blue line has to intersect the red line, and so, it dips down. This is a buffer that the county has, thanks to our homestead tax credit. So, the green is what folks pay. That's their net accessible base. The red is the buffer that they are not paying because of our homestead credit. So, their true home value is higher than what they are paying on their accessible base. The reason that that is good is because if there is an eventual downturn, even if home prices were to go down or steady off, our revenue would not go down because there is room in that red buffer. So, that would get eaten up first before the revenue did. Here's a look at our income tax. So, this slide is a little changed from last year. You notice that there's two tones on our yellow bar chart. So, we've colored in the 2.7% rate that you would pay below $50,000 of income, and then, we've kept steady the rate, 2.81, for all income above that. It does not change our overall standing amongst our peers. We're still the fourth lowest in all of Maryland. Okay, a little detail on the income tax revenue. Again, I mentioned before, a big increase from budgeted '22 numbers, and this was just, it just came back high. Again, this was not a phenomenon unique to Anarond County. We saw revenue come back higher in other counties, and in fact, in the state of Maryland as well. So, looking forward in FY '23, you can see the bullet point here. We're basing the assumption that personal income will increase 5.5 in calendar year '21, 3.5 in '22, and 3% in '23. We think that those are responsible estimates. They're modest estimates, and, again, we think that this will end up panning out. We're still seeing an income, an ongoing impact from the federal tax law of a few years back. People are just paying their taxes differently, and many more people are taking the standard deduction instead of itemizing. And then, this year, as we mentioned, we're utilizing the progressive income tax rate. So, all told, $714.7 million of income tax revenue. That is up 10.4% from what was passed in the '22 budget. And this is what it looks like in income tax. Again, the numbers dip down because the real dollars are intersecting with today's dollars. Record and transfer tax. This is a big one. This is what we get from real estate transactions, and FY '22 just blew up. I mean, we just got a ton of recordation and transfer. we just got a ton of recordation and transfer tax revenue this year. It's not sustainable. It's not going to keep up. The last time it was this high, it was the housing bubble of, you know, twelve or fifteen years ago, and it eventually came down. So what you'll see is that we are projecting revenue to go down as well. What we're seeing in FY twenty-three is negative growth in transactions because mortgage rates are getting higher and inventory is still low. This is what that looks like. So I like this graph. It shows the shark fin on the left around two-thousand-five and two-thousand-six. That was the housing bubble when everything tanked. I was on the council shortly after that, and it was no fun because we had to start cutting things because the county was over-leveraged on the recordation and transfer tax. So we're trying to stay ahead of that. Frankly, that's why, you know, we missed on our estimates for recordation and transfer in twenty-two. We were very low because we didn't think that this level would stay as long as it did. It will eventually go down. We don't know when it's going to go down. We don't know how much it's going to go down. It will go down. So what you see is the dotted blue dip is where we are forecasting it to be, which is about one-hundred-and-thirty million or so. And that dotted red line just shows you a little bit of an artificial trend line of if we take that big kind of front shark fin out, where we would be if that was a constant trend, which we think is a very responsible place, that we will probably end up somewhere around there. It may take a couple of years to get there. It may drop off immediately, and we will see a big drop. It may not drop off, and then we'll get a lot more fund balance next year if recordation and transfer tax stays high. But the point I want to make is that we are hedging against that possibility by having a responsible estimate. So that's why you will see a drop versus our revised FY twenty-two numbers and what we're projecting in twenty-three. Oh, this is interesting because the orange line is the number of units sold, and I'm going to flip back and forth these two. But you can see how much, how closely that tracks the revenue numbers, right? So do you see how that's starting to dip down on the far right? And that is why we're starting to dip ours down on our revenue projections as well. And here's partial part of the reason why, mortgage interest rates. If anyone was going to refinance their house, I hope you did it a few months ago because the mortgage rates have gone up to five percent. That's a very sharp increase. There's all sorts of different projections on whether that will level off or continue to go up. Time will tell, but the days of below three percent seem to be behind us for a little while. State shared revenue. This is kind of a complicated category that has a bunch of different things, but I did want to mention a couple of things. Highway user revenue. So we, the county, back in the day, used to get a ton of highway user revenue. Now we get a pittance. A bill did pass in the legislature this year where we will start getting more, but that won't kick in until FY twenty-four. But we did revise it up a tad. And then admissions and amusement tax, which the council had some fun discussions over recently. We are increasing that a little bit as people get out and about more and start playing the fun things and going out to see movies again and things like that. So you'll see our projections for FY twenty-three are going up. The other thing I do want to mention, table games, people are gambling, y'all, and we get a taste of that. So our table games revenue is up. So all told, we're looking at an increase based on the original budget in state shared of about eighteen percent compared to FY twenty-two approved. This is what it looks like. It's kind of a slow, steady increase. You see the dip back in twenty. That was the pandemic, but it's been a recovery since then. That big hump in the middle of your screen that says VLT, that was the first year we got the big slug of video lottery terminal funds, and it came in as state shared, but now that's folded into the general fund. So that's why that hump is there and then went away. Local sales tax. This is kind of weird. It's basically hotel motel tax, and it's parking. And both of those took a big dip during the pandemic but are recovering. So all told, we're looking at a modest increase, under five percent compared with FY twenty-two budgeted amount. Here's what that looks like, a big dip during COVID. It has recovered a bit, but you see it's not recovered to the pre-pandemic levels, and it may take some time to get there. License and permits, again, another dip due to the pandemic. You see in FY twenty, it went out. It has started to recover, not quite up to where it was pre-pandemic. We're basically forecasting a flat growth year for licensing and permits. Investment income, similarly, we are just forecasting short-term interest rates to remain flat, so keeping it flat from our revised twenty-two estimate. Inner fund reimbursement. This is where the general fund kind of does work for enterprise funds and some other special funds. So this is just an accounting measure that kind of resettles that money back where it belongs. So this happens every year, and it's a total of seventy-seven-point-eight million. I like this slide because you know who else likes this slide? The bond rating agencies. That's who. We have grown with this council, our revenue reserve fund significantly. And thanks to each and every one of you for your support in doing that. Way back in the days when I was on the council, we passed Bill seventy-fifteen that set the max at five percent. You all have raised that first to six percent, and now hopefully with this budget to seven percent. And that will give us about one-hundred-and-thirty-two million dollars in our reserves. That's certainly an important thing, especially as we look at some point in the future there being the next eventual recession. We will now have much more money in the county rainy day fund to protect taxpayers against that eventuality. This is just a table. I won't go through, but it shows all the tax rate fee changes. So it has everything that I just went through, what the approved rates were in twenty-two and what the proposed rates are in twenty-three, along with the percent change. And the kind of cool thing to see here is if you look at the top chart there in the general fund, everything is zero percent change. So no tax fee rates. The only thing you'll see that's an increase there is the water and sewer rates, which I mentioned before. And then again, and this was codified, but the capital connection charges are going up again as the multi-year plan called for. Okay, so let's talk about where the money's going. Here's a pie chart you guys are used to. You see the biggest slice of the pie is our friends at the Board of Education. They're now forty-four percent. I label this fully loaded because we're including things that are beyond the giant check we write to the Board of Ed, but that also support the Board of Ed. So these are things like the school health officers, the crossing guards, and school debt service. So when you bake all that in, that's forty-four percent. The next biggest slice of the pie, and this is again a little bit unusual, is general government. It's high this year because of all that fund balance. Usually, public safety is the second biggest piece of the pie, I think. So all the other smaller slices of the pie are very important, just don't get quite as much money as those other three. Here's what that looks like when you break it out into the numbers. So Board of Ed, fully loaded, nine-hundred-and-forty-two million dollars. They are approaching that magical one-billion-dollar number, which I'm sure we'll see in a year or two. But all that adds up to the number two-point-one-five-seven billion dollars. Okay, new positions. Fifty-nine new positions in the general fund. They're listed by department here. I do want to call out a couple of departments just to give some context. So central services and aging and disabilities, the county's taken over several facilities or expanded scope in several facilities, and they need people to operate those. Our friends in the wrecking parks, I think the council knows very well, are doing a lot more than they've ever done before. They have a lot more parkland and have a lot more student athletes and everything else. So they are getting some additional positions for, I think, park rangers and maintenance facilities and things like that. And then you see a healthy smattering of other positions to all the other departments. So they all total up to fifty-nine in the general fund. And each department, when they come before you, will give you a rundown of that, I am sure. The pay package, as the county executive mentioned during his remarks, we were able to get agreement with all of our bargaining units. We're very proud of that. And they are all very comparable. So we were pretty equitable across the board this year. And in general, each unit is getting about four-point-five percent cost of living adjustment, along with a merit or a step increase. And that is the same package that the non-represented employees are getting as well. The other thing I wanted to call to your attention is that we are giving a similar four-point-five percent cost of living adjustment to all of our contractual employees. That will happen when their contracts renew. So obviously, all their contracts don't come up at July first. It might be later in the calendar year. But when they get renewals, we have built in an increase there. And furthermore, for any contracts that were at a wage of less than fifteen dollars an hour, we're bringing them up to a fifteen-dollar-an-hour minimum. So all told, this has a fiscal impact to about twenty-point-two million dollars. Debt service. Okay, county debt service, sixty-point-three million. Then you add the Compass Point Golf Course debt, which is held out a little separately. Then you add our community college debt, and then the big one is our school system construction for debt service. And so you add that all together, we're at about one-hundred-and-fifty-three million total debt service. Here's the debt service history. You see the county debt service grows a little bit. The big one that's grown since, you know, over the last decade and a half or so is the school construction. So that's the Board of Ed because we've been trying to catch up with that big two-billion-dollar backlog. This is a cool map that comes from DLS. It just shows you the percent of accessible base for each county. You'll notice that Anarundel is that kind of shade of, I'd call it maybe beige, and that is among the lowest. If you look at all of our other neighbors in the central Maryland metropolitan counties, they are a darker blue color, which means that they are a much higher percent of their accessible base. So we are lower. We are happy about that. Here's the numbers that kind of show the what's going on behind the scenes. So these are our debt service to operating revenue percentages. And if you look at our year in here, eight-point-nine percent, that is still lower than what we saw back during the previous administration. So all told, though, this has been pretty constant, usually in the mid to upper eights throughout the last ten or fifteen years. OPEB, this is retiree healthcare, essentially, just showing the slide to prove that we did make our required OPEB contribution. We are on track to get it funded where we need it to be. That's a pretty aggressive schedule that we set up a few years ago, and we are on track for that. So county, something very for the county to be very proud of. Okay, our component units. These have a little bit more autonomy than our other county departments, so we don't have as much detail. But Board of Ed, so the big giant check that we present them is eight-thirty-four-point-seven. That gets put into the fourteen different buckets that I think we're all familiar with. But then we also add these indirect support funds. So this is the debt service, the school health, and the school safety that I mentioned before. So that's how you get your nine-forty-two million-dollar number. That's about forty-four percent of the county budget. It's about fifty percent of the county recurring budget when you take the fund balance out. Okay, so if you look at their unrestricted funds, and this is what the county really has the ability to program in to our priorities, we are about sixty-three percent of their total unrestricted budget. And that's a year-over-year increase of one-hundred-and-thirty, one-hundred-and-thirteen-point-seven million that the board has compared to last year. Fifty million of that is county funds. So that's forty-four percent. And that is a historic investment. It's the most ever incremental contribution to the Board of Ed. If you look at all funding sources, it basically pulls in some other state dollars and federal dollars, but then that's a year-over-year increase of one-hundred-and-fifty-eight-point-five million. And so our fifty million contribution is a little bit less. It's thirty-one-point-five percent of that. Lots of highlights to go over, though. We're fully funding the compensation package that the Board of Ed requested. So they're getting a four-percent COLA for all steps. Then there's the back steps to catch up with units two through four. Remember, we did all of the unit one, which is the teachers. We did all of that last year. But this is the final catch-up steps for the other units this year. And then they did negotiate a mid-year step, which we're fully funding. And the new one is this salary enhancement piece. This is for some sort of board certification that when teachers take under the blueprint requirement, they get more funding, or they get a bonus. So that's good. But all of that is fully funded. There's four-hundred-and-twenty-four total new positions in the Board of Ed budget, and that accounts for about thirty-eight million dollars. The county executive went through the highlights that are on this page, so I won't restate those for you. But here are a couple of other things I just wanted to call out that are important. We did fund the per pupil increase for contracting charter schools. Substitute teachers are getting a five-dollar-a-day increase. The Board of Ed added to the superintendent's budget funding for a teen parenting program that we did fund. And then we're fully funding the menstrual hygiene products initiative that the school board requested as well. Our friends in the contractual school bus driving business are getting a ten percent cost of living adjustment as requested by the Board of Ed. And then thirteen new buses was the final calculation for that prismatic study that they did. And then eight new assistant principals, which was a priority for the superintendent. Our friends in the community college. So they did well this year. They got more state funding through the state formula, which is very good. We are also giving the the community college one million dollars of incremental county contribution. So their total year-over-year increase is four-point-four million. We're one million of that, or twenty-two-point-eight percent. But as you see, the county is the largest of their four funding components. We have been about forty percent over the last few years. Library funding. They're having a good year. So a total library funding of about thirty-one-point-four million dollars. And the county is by far the largest component of that at eighty-eight-point-five percent. We're giving them a actual year-over-year increase of two-point-three million, which is one-hundred-and-four-point-five percent of the year-over-year increase because some of their other funding went down. And so we are funding them more. Okay, here's a quick operating summary. Recurring revenue, one-point-eight-nine-two billion. One-time revenue, remember that one-time police aid from the state, add that three million. Then we add in our fund balance utilization. Our total revenue there is two-point-one-five-seven-point-four budget. Our total appropriations is the same number, meaning that we have a zero-dollar balance, which means that we have a balanced budget. Fund balance and one-time revenue utilization. Okay, so that big two-hundred-and-sixty-two-point-three-dollar number, where is it all going? This chart walks you through that. The biggest investment is we're pumping it into the capital budget as pay-as-you-go or pay-go. So that's two-hundred-and-five dollars of cash, two-hundred-and-five million dollars of cash going into the CIP. I also mentioned the pension contribution before. We're putting some extra money in the garage vehicle operating fund because gas prices went up. There's ten million dollars for the housing trust fund to start that up. There's twenty-three-point-five for the rainy day fund contribution. We have started up the resilience authority, and that's going to be one million dollars of additional seed funding so they can do some regional assessments that will help them attract more dollars to do their good work. And then baked within the budget is about twenty-six million dollars of one-time expenses. So these are things like equipment or other things that are not in the capital budget. So all that together is two-hundred-and-eighty-eight-point-three one-time expenditures. And then, remember, we're also committed to reducing the structural deficit and eliminating it. So when you sum all that together, what you get is a hundred-thousand-dollar structural surplus. And that's the first surplus the county has seen since the COVID pandemic. This is what it looks like on a graph. For many years, the county was slowly but steadily digging itself out of the previous structural deficit that had opened up during the Great Recession. Then we had four years where we were back in the black. Then the COVID pandemic hit, so we opened up another structural deficit. We reduced that a little bit this year. And now, as you can see from the arrow, we are back in the black. We have a hundred-thousand-dollar budget surplus forecasted this year. Let's talk about capital. Oh, yes, look at that. We do have a triple-A bond rating from Moody's. Have you guys heard about that? Yes, okay. So we now have a triple-A from both of our rating houses. That's very good for the capital budget. It's very good for the county. And here's our debt affordability model. So previous to this year, what you saw is that top layer level number was one-hundred-and-seventy million. But as we've discussed before, we're reducing that each year, so it's now one-hundred-and-sixty million. We did not use eighteen-point-nine million of authority last year, so we can carry that over and add that to the FY twenty-three number. But then, as you look down, you see that we are much below all of our affordability ratios and guidelines. And this is very important. It's also something to be proud of. But even if you look all the way over to the extreme right, as we forecast out to fiscal year twenty-eight, all of our guidelines and ratios are beneath and well beneath the the guidelines. So if you look at nine-point-three percent, that's under eleven-point-five. If you look at one-point-six-five percent, that's under two, and so forth. So we feel good about that. We are going to, starting this year, we're going to start indexing the debt per capita because that is the only guideline that is not a percentage. That's a hard dollar amount. So that will increase modestly based on January CPI each year so that we don't have to, you know, do what the poor people in Congress have to do and raise, you know, their thing by, you know, legislation. So then the debt service numbers are below the chart there. You can see how they change over time. And then, as a reference, we've put the total personal income numbers and also as the population grows, so you can get a sense of how that is comparable to the model as well. Okay, use of bonds and pay-go. Here's the big two-hundred-and- Here's the big $205 million number in the middle of your screen there. So that's the fund balance. So that's extraordinary amount of fund balance. That's helping us do a lot of things. Number one, there are cost increases in virtually every out-year project this year because of supply chain issues, increase in labor costs because of the prevailing wage law. So all those things together are manifesting a increase. But because we're able to put all this cash in the budget, that helps spread out our bond authority more, and we're able to keep everything on track, we're also adding in some of our key new projects this year. And frankly, a lot of the good news in the capital budget is because we also got additional state funding from the legislature and from frankly, the governor's office. So a lot of good allies this year, that's all coming together. I will speak for Naomi and say that this was a very complex capital budget. When you guys dig in, you will see more funding sources than usual. You will see more complexities than usual because there was a lot of different things that make up this capital budget. But the end result is a lot of great projects and the previous projects being kept on track. So we're very proud of that. But if you look all the way down to the bottom, you will see that each year cumulatively, totals at the end, at the end of our CIP, we're under the total affordability model by about 5 million. So this is within our guidelines. The other thing I just want to point out is fund balance is typically a same-year phenomenon. We don't project fund balance out, so that's why you see next year is only 10 million and then 5 million for the out-years. We certainly expect and we certainly hope that those numbers will be much higher. I do not think that we'll be here next year telling you that there's $205 million of pay-go again, but I would hope that we'll have a nice modest or moderate amount of fund balance to continue putting in to the capital budget. The permanent public improvement, or PPI, fund is fully deployed in this budget, so I won't go through this list, but this is all of the projects in this CIP that have PPI funding. And you see, if you look down at the bottom right, that totals up to the full amount of $250 million. That was certainly extremely helpful to address our backlog in public safety, transportation, and school projects. Just a few highlights from the capital budget. It's a total BOE request of 189.2 million. This is fully funded for the first time that anyone can remember. Mr. Shaknovich will bring before you a single-colored sheet of paper instead of red, white, and blue. It will be all white because it's all funded. I told him he could save some money and print that on a black and white printer. You're also going to see record funding for our Department of Wreckin' Parks. That includes two new schools or two new parks at Tanyard Springs and South Shore. Those are both what we would call sports parks or athletic parks. Tanyard Springs is the site of what we expect will be a future school many years in the advance, but when they do build that school, they will be able to utilize the fields that they are building there. So that's a good symbiosis there. And then South Shore will be the first indoor or covered multi-use field, and our friends at Wreckin' Parks will explain that project and many more to you when they come before you. We're also fully funding the Joint 911 Call Center. We've prioritized that, so planning and design will begin in '23, if you should pass the budget. The new police firearms training center or firing range, that is also highlighted and prioritized, so will begin in FY '23. The county executive mentioned in his remarks that we got an extraordinary amount of support from the General Assembly and the governor's office for the Crownsville Hospital Memorial Park. We got $30.5 million over two years. You will see that in our capital budget in the Wreckin' Parks project. We also put 500,000 of county money in there so we could spend something immediately if we had to. I want to give a specific shout-out to Hannah Dyer in our office, who worked very closely with the legislature to help secure that funding. We jokingly refer to that as Hannah bucks, and that's a lot of Hannah bucks. So there's also eight new transportation projects and increased funding for road resurfacing and road reconstruction. Okay, here's what the pie chart looks like. Biggest slice of that pie is Board of Ed, and then roads and bridges, and then wreck and parks. That's about what you would expect. Here's what it looks like with the numbers. So you can see those are some impressive numbers. And then on the left is the FY '23, which is kind of this year, and then the out-years total is off to the right. So it's $572 million. That's all funding sources. That's not all county money. And then it's a $2 billion CIP, but again, that is a lot of different funding sources. Okay, we're getting to the home stretch here. Major enterprise funds, not a whole lot I'm going to talk about here. I'll just show you, this is the pie chart that shows you where the revenues come from and where the expenditures go. I will just point out that on both of the utility funds here, you see that the revenues are slightly less than the expenditures. That just shows that we're starting to draw down fund balance there, so that's not unusual. And then the closing remarks, I will pretty much remind you that you can access all of these documents on the county budget page. For those watching at home, that's aacounty.org/budget. These are all online. The full budget books are online, as well as the four-page budget highlighter book, and you can dig in to your heart's consent. We will also are planning to update the FY '23 numbers once the budget is approved into the Steven Turo Budget Buddy tool so that users will be able to explore the FY ' '23 budget. But we're going to do that probably, I would say, in July. So that's it from me. Again, I am your budget officer. I am at your disposal, and we will entertain any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from my colleagues? Councilwoman Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to point out that Kristin Bower just gave that whole speech without taking a breath. And I did actually think of questions, but now they're gone, and so you're lucky. I will just be asking the specific presenters as we go along, but thank you.
Very good.
Go ahead, Mr. Pruski.
Mr. Trumbauer, this is a process question, but I think it's important to get on the record. This is the fourth budget for this council, and I know we didn't have it as the record, but I think it's important as we go through the presentations, I would hope that it'll be new projects or major changes. Simply, again, people I think hopefully by this point need to know how to read the budget book, and you also can tell that to the department heads when they come so we can be as efficient as possible.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pruski, and I have sent out guidance to the department directors, but if any of them are watching at home, the council has reiterated its preference to focus on new projects and major changes. So that's my expectation as well. I've told directors, if they have presentations, to please keep them very brief and focus on new stuff and big changes.
Thank you.
All right, I'll ask a couple questions, seeing no lights for my colleagues. This one may not be something you can answer immediately, but I'm hoping that someone maybe can figure this out. I know that, you know, when we took office at the end of 2018, the estimate for the capital projects, for AACPS capital projects backlog was about $2 billion. Do we, with projects that are now in the works, do we have an estimate of where we are in terms of, I realize this actually might, I'm seeing Mr. Shaknovich in the back, this might be a question he could answer. So I don't know if there's someone that could figure that out. I'm just curious how far we've come in terms of digging out of the hole.
It's a great question, Madam Chair, and it's, again, I think proving the importance of the PPI fund and how we were able to move a lot of those old mill projects, because that was a big chunk of projects that was kind of holding up the works, and so now those are moving through the system. I do expect that there's been significant progress on the backlog. I also expect that there's been additional projects to show up on the tail end.
Of course.
But I would ask to defer that question to when the Board of Ed comes before you and we're discussing the capital budget. I think they'll be able to give a much more detailed response.
Okay, cool. If you're listening, Board of Ed, that's something I'm curious about. All right, thank you. I just have one more question, actually. It's another AACPS-related question. I know, you know, this is something, I've obviously paid a lot of attention to transportation. I know that you said you funded the buses that were requested, but I also think there were some vans that were requested. Do you know if those were included in your budget?
You're speaking about the Board of Ed operating budget?
Yeah.
Mr. Turo, I think we funded all the transportation requests, so I believe so. I don't have that particular spreadsheet in front of me, but my recollection is that the vans, I think those were for non-public students that were getting transportation. I believe that that is included.
Yeah, my understanding was that state law had been modified to allow, you know, because we have a lot of buses that drive around the county, especially for those non-public placements where you have one or two kids on a big yellow. And, you know, to increase the efficiency, the Board of Ed asked for some vans.
I'm pretty sure if it said transportation, it got funded.
Got a checkmark. Okay, thank you. Any additional questions from my colleagues? This is crazy, but I see no additional questions from my colleagues, so thank you very much. I don't quite want to adjourn yet because we do have one little matter that we need to take care of as a council, but I just will say thank you very much for your presentation today. I'm sure we will all be in touch. But obviously, you know, this is almost a year's worth of work at this point, or eight, 10, I don't even know. You've been working on this for a very, very, very long time, so it really means a lot for you to come forward and present such a great budget to us today. And again, still seeing no red lights. I will dismiss this panel, and thank you again profusely, and have a lovely weekend.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, one last little item. So we just, and this is the category of other business on our agenda. We have one of our public hearings on the budget scheduled for May 9th in the council chambers, but we do not have a location determined, and I understand that we now have some options, that North County High School has offered to host the budget hearing on May 9th. We could, oh, excuse me, the, excuse me, 18th. The 9th is in the chambers. Okay, so we would do either North County High School, a second one in the chambers, or a virtual. Do my colleagues have any discussion on that topic or preferences they'd like to express? Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would throw out a vote for North County High School. I think it's been a great place. They've been a great host the past several years, and people coming out in person is a good thing, so more access in North County.
Okay, great. And I hear a second, and I was going to suspect Ms. Pickard was a thumbs up. Any from my, any other thoughts? I'm good to go with that, so I don't know if this, should we vote on this? Do we need a vote for this? Seeing shaking head?
Madam Chair, you could just do it where you say all in favor, opposed. If anybody is opposed, you would want to probably do a roll-call vote.
Okay, then I.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Pickard. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you to our executive officer for taking some time to scope out some alternative locations and, talking to you. Thank you, Laura, for all your hard work.
Sure, and I wanted to let the council know, I visited Glenn Burney the other day to check out, there's a theater in the emergency management building, the Hind Building. And it's a really nice location, but it's small. I don't think it would be really great for more than 50 people, and it doesn't yet have microphones installed, so I think it's a good thing to keep in mind for the future, and I wanted to note that I had checked that out, too.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'll say thank you for giving us some options to play with. So all in favor of holding our May 18th public hearing on the FY '23 budget at North County High School?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, seeing none, we will hold that hearing at North County High School on May 18th at 7:00 p.m. The time has already been advertised, correct? Okay, so, all right. And we'll update this on the county website. Let's see, so just a couple other little notes. So the first public hearing on FY budget, FY '23 budget will be held on May 9th, right here at 7:00 p.m. The second one, we've decided will be at North County on the 18th at 7:00 p.m. Additional public hearings on the proposed property tax and the proposed income tax will also be held during our regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, May 16th. The council website will be updated as soon as possible with all of this information and more. Is there any other business to be brought before the council at this time? All right, seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion carries. The council is adjourned until May 2nd, 2022, for our regular council meeting at 7:00 p.m. right here in the chambers. Have a great weekend.